I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is actually a very special evening for two reasons. Typically, each year shortly after we name the current year's recipient to the Issaquah Hall of Fame, we have a reception for previous Hall of Fame recipients. And this year, the cake and the coffee that you see outside the council chamber was for them, but it's really for anyone who would like a piece of cake or a cup of coffee any time this evening. And I would just like to say we are honored this evening to have a number of previous recipients present. Reverend Bob Gray, who was a 1989 recipient, who just stood, and Bob, if you'd come up to, you know, and stand at front, I'll have some others join you in just a minute. We also have the 2001 recipient, David Harris, if you would join Bob. And also the 2003 recipient, Robin Kelly. And the 2005 recipient, Leo Finnegan. And the 2012 recipient, Barb D. Michelle. And the 2002 recipient, Rose Finnegan. So if you would join your folks, and I'll say a couple of words. The folks that you see standing before you are those that have really made a lasting impression in our community over a long period of time. And the names of all of the recipients are on the plaques that you see on the wall to my right. And so it is wonderful that we have an opportunity to honor them. This year's recipient, who could not be here unfortunately, is the chaplain for Eastside Fire and Rescue, had that position for about 10 years, Shelley Frye. And she has supported our community members during times of trauma and tragedy, offering compassionate words and a shoulder to lean on. She started as a volunteer chaplain back in January of 2014 and has responded to hundreds of calls, accidents, cardiac arrest, fires, and other trying circumstances. Calls never came at a convenient time, but she never hesitated or complained about responding. And she provided tremendous caring and support to the families that were involved in these tragedies. She was a voice of calm compassion in the midst of trauma, who did her job with grace and humor. She is that person who is a rock in the face of tragedy, according to one coworker, and a steadying force when a person's life is falling apart. She indeed was a miracle worker. So I'd like to recognize again previous recipients and Shelley and offer a round of applause. And so thank you very much for coming. Our first order of business under special business is Agenda Bill 7022, Issaquah High School Girls Track and Field Team Day proclamation. And I would ask that all sort of come up here and gather around. I see quite a few of you. So let's not be bashful. You weren't bashful when you competed. Okay, and their coach is, well, you need the coach up here, or coaches. So I have a proclamation, and like all proclamations, they have and begin with a number of whereses. So whereas the Issaquah High School Girls Track and Field Team represents the best of determination, sportsmanship, and teamwork in our community and our youth, and whereas the Girls Track Team finished with 59 points, 11 points ahead of its closest competitor in the 2015 state championship meet, and whereas on May 30th, 2015, the Girls Track and Field Team clinched the first Track and Field Team state title in Issaquah High School's history and claimed the school's first 4A team championship in any sport since the school entered that classification in 2008. Now therefore, I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim that June 15th, 2015, to be Issaquah High School Girls Track and Field Team Day in the City of Issaquah. And I invite all of our citizens and joining me to recognize the team's hard work and outstanding skills, and I further commend the team for being such fine representatives of our city, and the Issaquah School District, and witness whereof I herein to set my hand in steel of the City of Issaquah the 15th day of June 2015. And so here is the proclamation, and who am I presenting this to? The team. Well, there we are. There we go. Young ladies, you've done us proud. Thank you very, very much, and have a great summer, and we look forward to seeing you back here next year. Okay, we will now move to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit them to the city clerk. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, one person, Pat McGrath.
Come on up.
My name is Pat McGrath. I'm at 145 Newport Way Northwest in the beautiful City of Issaquah. My objective tonight is to present you with some technology which the mayor has been acquainted with, and the prior mayor, Ava Fissinger also, also acquainted with this technology, which is called Boost Ride for bicycles, have been Representative Dave Reichert, Chad Mangandez, and Jay Rodney. They all know about what this is, and I've given them a written input. Every member of the council has a written input, which I dropped off today. You may not have had time to read it. The mayor has as also. The gist of the idea is the use of a linear induction motor, a patented technology application, to allow the bicycle rider to move up to a nominal 20 miles an hour when they ride just by riding over the so-called primary of a linear induction motor which is placed in a pathway. This is not cheap, but there's also provision made for automated cost of a charge of $4 to $5 a day, so you could ride your bicycle up hills like the Isquah Highlands Road with a great deal of ease. So this would not, well, this would do, of course, would enhance bicycle riding in general because the tough hills could be handled. It is not cheap, but as I say, it could be amortized over roughly two to four years, depending on the length of the track, where it's located, et cetera. So in general, again, it's not a technologically challenging thing because the work has already been done. I have two linear induction motors, one of which I was going to bring in tonight, but I had to park too far away. It's about 88 pounds each, a little bit heavy to haul on my shoulder. So what I'm suggesting really here tonight is that if anybody wants to talk to me about it further besides the council, I can be reached at PMcGrath1, that's P McGrath, number one, at Comcast.net. As I say, it's a patented technology. I own the patent, but the main point is that this could be kind of a quantum jump in the use of bicycles within the existing infrastructure that we have throughout the nation. And I believe sincerely, and maybe a little bit biased, that this is something that could really benefit the city and the states in the future. With that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Has anyone else signed up to speak?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening?
Thank you. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Thanks for all the hard work on the comprehensive plan amendments. There was a lot of detailed hard work, a lot of input by a lot of council members into that process, and I think a lot of great improvements to our plan, and thank you. Goals, we've been trying to do neighborhood engagement forever around this place. Hopefully, we'll come up with a way to do that. It is kind of amazing, even communities that have formal neighborhood associations and all, don't always find it that easy to communicate with their members, but we need to work on that. The public engagement area would be great. The model I keep seeing when I attend, basically, the committee I'm always at, or if I'm at any committee at least, is land and shore, and the opportunity to speak to each agenda item at that committee meeting is really helpful and gives a feeling of audience participation that's meaningful, and I think it's also helpful to the council members, not just at the start, to talk on something before a staff presentation or all, or even any discussion or questions by the council members. Schools, I think we need some improvement on our working with the school district. The school district talks a lot about sustainability, but their new middle school design was all there to encourage people to drive their students to school in single occupancy vehicles, or maybe two occupancy vehicles, I guess, or more, but not, and really make it the least pleasurable and the least convenient, I believe, for students riding the buses. I think we need to really work with the school district on their transportation planning to really see if we can do to cut that, cut down the need for single, for individual cars going to schools. All it does is waste my tax dollars for them having to pay impact fees for the traffic they increase and all facilities they have to put into schools to provide for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening?
Hi, my name's Connie Marsh. I have a store at 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard and also live in town. And so I want to start off with super positive. Oh, that's so unusual for me. The comprehensive plan last two weeks was a pleasure. The council read it, put out very thoughtful comment, land and shore with Tola woven in there, did a really good job of putting their comment in clearly so that then staff could take their language. And then staff did one of the best jobs I've seen staff do in all this time, in actually taking the language that was requested by council and translating that into cogent comprehensive plan language. And that doesn't always happen, so I just have to say yay to council, yay to long-term planning staff, and yes, I'm on TV announcing it to the entire planet. So thank you very much. I really appreciate the added effort. And now you have all read the comprehensive plan, so you're going to know what they're talking about, which is the best possible thing, right? So then I'm going to move on to the goal-setting session, and I was there during the breakout sessions, which, for those out there in the viewing public, there's these topics of conversation, and then they broke them out into smaller groups, and each group had discussions. So the one that I thought did not translate well in the agenda bill that was put out tonight was the transportation one. I was there in the breakout session. I was not there in the, when everybody got together and discussed it and then came forth to the goal. So what I'm going to be talking about initially is what I heard when I was there. And I thought the transportation goal discussion was distressing from a person in the public because it was 99% about a bond issue and whether we were going to do a bond issue in February, or if not February, a little later, and how to do that. And I had not understood that we were doing a bond issue. I didn't think it was that clearly stated that that is the direction we were going, and I didn't think that there had been a public conversation to that end. And so I thought that conversation was awkward to me, sort of in the extreme, because there were, what, three of us from the public there to hear what sounded like a done deal. Now, when I read the goal that came in the package, it was a very general goal that basically said, well, we're going to try to figure out how to fund transportation. So I went looking for the minutes, thinking, man, I must have missed something in the next conversation because this goal does not at all reflect what I heard in the breakout session. So what happened? Well, there were no minutes because they weren't done. And so I started calling around, and Emily kindly called me back and assured me, though now, you know, my hackles are up, that the council is very aware that the public has not seen a decision made to go for a bond issue, and that they want a robust, that's my word, a public discussion before that decision is made, and that we are not putting a large work, I'm, again, embroidering, putting a large work effort toward this bond issue going out in February. And for the viewing public, the $100 million number was tossed out there randomly, which sort of bothers me because I don't know how you got to a $100 million number tossed out randomly. So, big deal, going to the public for a large bond issue is ours, our money, our town, our transportation, not at all something to be discussed behind closed doors without very, very broad public knowledge. And so I put my emphasis there, and now I'm going to wind up and say, but you guys did an excellent job on the comprehensive plan. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
My name is Greg Line River. I'm, would like to propose an idea to be talked about and discussed, and no way have I formalized this into a formal agreement, but my proposal would be to, for all of us to share our input, share our money and our finances, to put solar panels on all the houses and apartment buildings inside this town. Would be a massive undertaking if we did it all by our own. We certainly, most people can't even afford it, but if we shared our resources and our money, we could do it together. We could all do it together and make a lot of money off of this, and we could even possibly create our own utility district, charge money to ourselves, make a revenue stream from us, from selling the electricity and from other resources too. This is not going to be an easy undertaking. There's a very complicated legal issues involved, but I think it's doable. The Germans are doing it, and they're doing it with clouds, about as cloudy as Alaska. We could probably do it better here. We could probably do it with more money and make more money off of it. It would probably pay for itself in about five years, and we could probably make more money over the intervening years afterwards for about 30 to 40 years of the life of the solar panels that we would install. Now, there are lots of questions about how quickly the technology is going to advance in the future. Maybe we should wait a couple of years till nanotechnology starts to catch up and give us better products. Now, these are things we could discuss, but perhaps maybe we should convene a subcommittee to study the idea and maybe push forward on it. Is there, is there, any thoughts out here on this? Would you guys be supportive out of an idea like this?
This is actually an opportunity for you to come and speak to the council, but it's not a question-and-answer exercise.
Okay. My apologies.
But you've raised, but you've raised an interesting possibility. We also heard of another possibility earlier during public comment also, and it's something the council and the administration is now aware of, and so with that, we'll see where the discussion goes from here, Greg.
Okay. If you do form a committee to state this, I'd most certainly like to serve on that committee, if you would. One last thought on the apartment complexes itself, it's really, this is going to be a tough one to sell for people because the apartment managers aren't going to want to do it. There's no incentive for them, and for the people living there, there's no incentive. But there is an incentive to all of us to put out solar panels there, and if we could create a public utility district here, I'm not sure about the legal ramifications of this, but if we could, we could sell our own electricity. We can't do it right now, but we could if we had our own public utility district, I believe. I don't know. But anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Seeing none, then public comment, audience comments are closed. And let me just point out, before I move to committee and regional reports, that Council Member Goodman is absent this evening, an excused absence. And with that, I'll move to Nina Milligan for her committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to share some information from the King Conservation District. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending a launch event for the Regional Food Systems Grants. As we know from Council Member Polly's work last year, the King Conservation District worked very hard to make a new work plan and to fund it. And it was very exciting, but it's even more exciting to see who wants that money. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that this is an active opportunity with a deadline of July 1st for, just for the letters of intent with the applications to follow. This is a pot of $650,000 available for people, and as I said, it's called the Regional Food Systems, and the sorts of things that fall under that are local farms, even new farms, and food access projects. So I hope that there will be people in Issaquah that will be interested in this and step up to the plate and say, hey, I've got a great idea. Help me with funding it. The information can be found at kingcd, for King Conservation District, kingcd.org. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to give the report for Council Member Goodman this evening on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting. I'd first like to thank the mayor for standing in with that meeting last week, which we found out was the longest board meeting they've ever had. It's over four hours. Couple of big items that they were talking about there. Currently, there is a process out to hire a recruiting consultant to help fill the fire chief's position. The fire chief is retiring on January 31st. The initial proposals have been received, and there is a committee working on interviewing those consultants, and we hope to have one onboard after the board meeting in July. There is also every meeting, an update on the EFOR Board Goals, which is a new annual process that we've started, and also a quarterly update that was included in our information package for those interested in seeing the progress as the year goes on. There was a very lengthy discussion, very informative discussion, from District 10 and District 38 and their legal representatives, as well as legal representation for Eastside Fire and Rescue, on what the formation of an RFA would mean for District 10 and 38, and also the impact of that, if they were to merge and be one partner, joining the organization instead of the two currently are. There's an audio tape for any council members who are interested in it. I've gotten a copy for Council Member Goodman, but anybody else who is interested, I think maybe it'd be very interesting for you as well. I have that available. Also, the draft budget for the fire department was presented at the last board meeting. And just one small financial note, there are some refunds from the Capital Facilities Fund back to two partners. Money that has accrued in the account after facilities are replaced then gets refunded back to the partners. So Issaquah and District 10 are both going to be receiving a refund from that account. And the firefighting local and management have got a draft agreement out there, and the board was, provided some information on that in executive session, but it appears that things are close and look like they're headed in the right direction. And that's all for EFOR. My other two updates, the land and shore met on June 4th, reviewing AB 6996, property tax reduction via public benefit rating system. It's on this evening's regular business, and it will require a public hearing. AB 6955, comp plan and zoning map amendments, is coming this evening to council. There are some specific council member amendments that will be discussed during this, and staff will be doing the presentation tonight. Update, we had an update on AB 7001, which is Land Use Code Amendment regarding wetland rating system. That one is not going to be moving forward for a while. They're just looking at the impact on current parcels in Issaquah right now. AB 6984, amendment to the transfer development rights in a local agreement with King County. The recommendation from land and shore was to move it forward. It will be on a future agenda, but it is not on our meeting agenda this evening. Our next meeting is July 3rd. The last one I want to report on is the Growth Management Policy Board for the Puget Sound Regional Council. They met on June 4th, and they had one action item, which was the recommendation of the approval for the City of Issaquah application for the Regional Growth Center designation. And the board did recommend that for approval, and it will be going to the Executive Board at PSRC in July, Mr. Mayor, I think, in July. The other items in there were information items only, but there is an interesting report called the Regional Growth Strategy Technical Report, which is an assessment of how growth management planning is working and achieving the goals of Vision 2040. So I haven't had a chance to dig into that, but I'm hoping maybe to do that for council and provide a summary email with a few highlights from that. And that's it.
Thank you. Council Member Mars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council services and safety committee will not be, or did not meet this month. The meeting was canceled. Secondly, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, June 10th, and there's one topic for discussion today that I'm going to bring up in For the Good of the Order, which has to do with the Best Starts for Kids Levy. The King County Growth Management Policy Council, next meeting is Wednesday, July 22nd at 4:00 p.m. in the PSRC chambers. The focus will be on climate change. The King County Regional Law and Social Justice Committee will meet Thursday, June 25th at 7:30 a.m. in the Bertha Knight Landis Room of Seattle City Hall. And finally, the King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee did not meet this month. However, they held a caucus sort of intro seminar for those of us who are new to EMAC, and we were well-educated in that session. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Council Member Cher.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee, which was scheduled for Thursday, the 18th of this month, has been canceled. We will pick up our discussions and any potential agenda items in July. That meeting will be tentatively scheduled for the third Thursday in July, which is July 16th, in our usual location in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest at 5:30 p.m. By way of a regional report, the Eastside Transportation Partnership met last Friday, June 22. June 12th. We had an update from the Planning Committee, led by Mayor Thomas of Woodenville, and we had an update on the development of a prospectus for the proposed Technology and Transportation Symposium. At our last council meeting, I announced that that was going to be October 2nd, but we actually had a switcheroo, and that's going to be October 9th. So there was a conflict that we were unaware of with another event that King County council members will be attending at that time, and so it will be in lieu of our regular October ETP meeting, so that is October 9th. And so mark that date if you're interested in attending. There are a number of potential speakers, which I've heard may be lined up for this. The location is TBD, but it could be Microsoft and Redmond or another prominent technology-based industry. And we've got two consultants working on this symposium as well, in addition to the Planning Committee, and this is really going to be a spectacular event that I'm really looking forward to in a few months. We took care of some housekeeping with procedures, and we had a presentation from the Kirkland City Manager Kurt Triplet on the Cross Kirkland Corridor Project, which is their new non-motorized trail project that utilizes the former Eastside Rail Corridor. And it's a really significant, outstanding project for the city of Kirkland that cuts north to south through their city and allows a lot of connectivity and public space and some great opportunities for them to connect in with other forms of transportation in the future. And then finally, we had our feature presentation from Representative Judy Cliburn, who is the Chair of the House Transportation Committee and a elected representative from the 41st Legislative District, of which Issaquah is a part. And Representative Cliburn spoke about a number of issues, but the general tone of the conversation was very positive. The report that we got back at ETP is that the House and Senate may be a lot closer on a transportation package than some people may think, or has perhaps been reported. And they're really working hard to make sure that both chambers get a transportation package to the governor at the end of the special session. And there seemed to be some very, very minor few things left on the plate. Not quite sure what those few things are, but it seemed very close. And I know that Representative Cliburn and Senator Curtis King of Yakima are working very hard on behalf of their respective caucuses in each chamber. There was also positive news on local funding as well and making sure that some projects that are important to us here in Issaquah are likely to be included in the transportation package that comes out of the legislature. So all in all, a very positive report from Representative Cliburn. 520 appears to be funded to complete the West Side. 405 is moving forward with the hot lanes. And so there's a lot of exciting stuff going on, on a state and regional level when it comes to transportation. So a lot of things to look forward to here in the coming weeks. And I will not be at the next ETP meeting, so one of my vice chairs will be taking that over for me, but I'll try to bring back a report to you on what's been going on. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Barber.
No report.
Council President Wintersheim.
No report.
Thank you. Moving to the mayor's report. There will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing the acquisition of real estate under the provisions of RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NB. This item's expected to take approximately 15 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow in open session. And with that, I will report that I attended the 2015 Transit Summit on June the 11th and... Excuse me, June the 9th. And... Oh, actually, it was the 11th. Some of the suggestions included that we look at integrated parking management strategy, expanding the Orca Lift Low Income Fair to other parts of the region, and developing common performance metrics. The Transit Summit was the second year of transit integration, and with that, all of the transit general managers or CEOs were present from all five of the... Seven of the transit agencies and the Ferry District to talk about how we can work together seamlessly for an efficient regional transit system. And with that, moving to the consent calendar, I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed?
They have.
Okay. And then with that, I would ask the clerk to read into the record the consent calendar.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payables and payroll dated June 15th. Item B seeks approval of minutes for the council meeting of June 1st, 2015. Item C is Agenda Bill 7018, Arts Commission Appointment seeks confirmation. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. And with that, I would ask your pleasure on the consent calendar, Council President Wintersheim.
And we adopt the consent calendar as presented?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar down to regular business? With that, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose that carries unanimously. Our next item is a public hearing, Agenda Bill 6996, Property Tax Reduction Request Via Public Benefit Rating System for Two Properties. Before I open the public hearing, we'll hear a staff presentation from David Favor.
Thank you, and good evening. Yeah, I'll give a brief overview of the program and property summaries of the two properties in question, and then we can move on to the hearing. These are the two properties that you can't see very well, but there they are. It's the... Here's the mouse. The Overdale Park Park, the square located to south of Overdale Park and around the multifamily to the south. And then the Janet Wall property is a triangle as you head up 56th Street, also near or actually in Overdale Park. So what is PBRS? It's a Property Tax Reduction Program as an incentive to preserve open space. It's authorized by state law and administered through the King County program. And the process is highlighted there in the screen. It's generally applications by property owners, two in this case, evaluation analysis by King County staff and by city staff for those programs in each city. So we have two applications in our city, and there are several other applications in other cities in King County, but we're here tonight to hear the two in Issaquah. The Land and Shore Committee heard this Agenda Bill at a briefing on June 4th, and tonight we're holding the local government Issaquah public hearing. And then the second requirement of this program is a King County public hearing, which I understand is tomorrow. And per King County, action is required in the first six months of the year, so it's time-sensitive to hopefully act on this tonight so that this can move on to action by the county by July 1st. So that's the general overview. I mentioned King County staff has worked on this, and I want to introduce Bill Bernstein, the King County Staff Program Manager, who's done about all the work that you see in the packet. He's here to answer questions tonight. So on to the two properties. Here's the Overdale Park Park, general overview that we showed at Land and Shore. And then this is the site plan that's in the packet that they'll use to evaluate the property. So it's the L shape in the bottom right corner that's eligible for open space tax reduction. There are many different resources that can be protected, and it's kind of a point system, so the amount of different resources that are protected can increase the tax reduction. So aquifer protection, surface water quality buffer protection, urban open space, et cetera. So the recommendation is an 80% reduction, and if a resource restoration, kind of removal of invasive plants and planting of native plants is completed, a 90% reduction is possible. So that's a quick overview of the Overdale Park property. Then the second one is the Janet Wall property, and Janet's here tonight. This is the triangle piece, so the centerpiece of the triangle is available for credit. The sliver on the left is the driveway that is not open space, so not eligible in the program. And then the utility facility in the corner up here, also not available. So likewise, there's a list of open space resources available for protection that are recommended to result in an 80% reduction. And if Janet places in a conservation easement, which I think she's considering, then it could qualify up to 90% reduction. So those are the two properties under request tonight, and we're asking you to do two things tonight. One is to hold a hearing, and then second, to take action. And there's a resolution in your packet. The administration recommends approval of what I just described. So thanks, and we're here for questions.
Are there questions of David? Okay. Seeing none, then he's not leaving. He'll be available along with Bill from King County. And just as a reminder, the guidelines for public participation in the public hearing, when recognized, again, please come to the lectern, state your name, address, relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And if you... Well, you probably would not have any written comments for the public hearing. And so with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:54 and ask if... Or 44. Yeah, 44. Thanks, Paul. And I'd ask if anyone has signed up to speak at the public hearing.
No one has signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening at the public hearing for Agenda Bill 6996, Property Tax Reduction Request via Public Benefit Rating System for the two properties described? Yes, sir? Or ma'am? Excuse me.
I'm Louise Wenberg-Loos, and I live in Overdale Park at 5360 232nd Avenue Southeast. And Overdale Park was planted by Impey and Peters, the two bankers for Sea First in Issaquah in 1960. And I was a second children's librarian in the whole King County system in 1949 and 50, when Issaquah Library was in the dinky little brick building at City Hall across the street. So I've seen a lot of changes in that time, obviously. And between being on the staff at Issaquah Junior High as a librarian, I was involved in other statewide library work and had a space of time, so I took a five-week short course for credit at the University of Washington on environmental quality in the Puget Sound area. And the comment of the professor was that the most stable land around this area was up on the Semamish Plateau. And at that time, it was totally forested. And also that the glacial delta that runs in this gravel strip between Lake Semamish and North Bend was left over when the ice sheet met the glaciers. And this is just drift, glacial drift that was left behind when the glaciers receded. And so it's unstable. It's... I've been a master gardener for 31 years, and all the questions and the profile of that area is... It moves, and it's weird, and these properties for Public Benefit Rating System are located on that delta, and we need open space. Issaquah is so built up that we need it for habitat, clean air, and not any more pollution that requires public utility input. So I hope you agree to this request.
Thank you very, very much. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Mr. Kapler.
Thank you, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews. The only requirement is that Janet should give us all a tour of her work up there, which is immense every time I see her, which is pretty frequently with all her work helping on doing inventory of the plants on the new Squawk acquisition and all. It's been great, but she's always working, getting rid of invasive plants on all city property and state property and county property and her own property up in Overdale Park. So keep it up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening at the public hearing? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call. Anyone desiring to speak? Seeing none, then the public hearing is closed at 7:47 this evening. I got that right. So this is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee... Or excuse me. It's coming back from... Oh, Land and Shore. And so are there questions or discussion this evening?
Do you want to motion first, or just the...
That would be very nice.
I don't need to, or I should? I would move to approve Resolution Number 2015.
Dash 12.
Approving the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space Classification of the Overdale Homeowners Association and the Wall properties.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
If you'd like, I could give a few brief comments from our meeting. We had a little more extensive discussion than you guys had this evening. You'd like? So mostly for... At the Land and Shore, we went through that entire package that you saw, which I think is close to 100 pages in the council one, and it was very well put together, and there were not a lot of questions from either Council Member Barber or Milligan, but a lot of excitement that private property owners would do this and that it... We liked the program, and we were really happy with the package, and we just wanted to move it here tonight because they also have to go through a King County hearing as well. So we were pretty happy with what we saw.
Other questions or discussion? Josh?
Thank you. I had a comment and a question. The comment was, in looking through the application materials, it was sort of interesting to look at the ratings. I think that the applicants tended to score a little bit higher than perhaps the county outcome of those, just kind of an interesting observation in looking at the numbers. But nonetheless, they both qualify, so there's no doubt about that. The one question I had, though, is with respect to the HOA-owned property. I'm trying to figure out what are the legal ramifications if the HOA as an entity ceased to exist? In other words, if you have an individual property owner, it's obvious there's things in the statute that talk about sale of the property, and there's some good hammers in there about you have to pay all the back taxes if the use gets changed, and that's a really great setup. But then I started thinking about, well, you have this HOA owned, and the HOA is an entity as opposed to an individual. And entities, not that the Overdale Park HOA is going anywhere anytime soon, but entities can dissolve, entities can change, and I wasn't sure what that did insofar as the property tax situation when we're dealing with an entity as opposed to an individual. So I didn't know if there's any comments or thoughts on that.
So that's a good question, and I would answer by pretty much saying that the situation is similar in that, you know, just like if a private property, like if Ms. Wall sold her property, and there was a buyer who was not interested in participating, or if there was a reason for the property to come out of the program. The responsibility lays on... Lies on the owner prior to anything happening that would trigger a back tax bill. And there's... In the case of these types of entities, if there was any sort of change of ownership where the board was called something else, or it was dissolved and became another sort of group-held property, it's similar to that in that if that occurs, the assessor's office in most cases is going to be notified of that, and there'll be a review, them sending that information to my office and ensuring that the property is still in compliance, that there's no reason for any sort of issues to be addressed prior to that name change or ownership change. So it's handled fairly similarly, if that answers your question.
It doesn't fall to the individual. It doesn't fall to the individual homeowners that comprise the HOA, does it? It would be the successor and interest to the HOA?
Well, the, so are you talking about a complete change of ownership from separate, outside of the HOA, to, say, somebody completely not associated with that group any longer, or?
Like if it dissolved, right? So unlike, unlike an individual who, you know, there's death of homeowner provisions and so forth, the HOA as an entity can't die, so to speak, but it could dissolve or cease to exist as a legal entity. And so is there any risk to individual homeowners in that situation where they might be subject to a change in their individual tax bill that's not through the HOA?
No, yeah, there wouldn't be, right, right.
Okay, thank you. If that answers that.
Other questions or discussion? Nina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to chime in a little bit, and ask our viewing audience, since there are only a few people here in the room, to be listening in on this opportunity. This is, I think, a really great Issaquah brand moment, and Janet Wall has done incredible work. I'm so excited to see this application. It was great to read, there was a lot of support and help, you don't have to do it alone, and the other thing that's very exciting about this is that it's not an all-or-nothing proposition. If you have an opportunity to do some conservation on your property, you can do some of it, you don't have to do all of it. It's very inviting, and it does support our environment so well. And I want to thank both the applicants, Overdale and Janet, for doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. I just needed to chime in also. As we drive through town, and you're seeing the continual growth and the more density's going, and the trees coming down, unfortunately, it is really a pleasure to have applicants that are coming forward that want to preserve their space, and I know Janet lives this, this is her life, and we are always pleasantly anxious to see what you do next, because you're constantly outbringing us new information in regards to, you know, some plant that invasive that we need to remove, Janet. So hopefully, this goes through King County with no issues, and we'll be able to celebrate with you.
Council President Winterstein.
You want to issue my support for the comments made earlier? It is, I hadn't heard of this program before, seeing this come across, and the idea that a private owner or a landowner could, you know, put their land in such a state for the benefit of the public, and then to realize a tax benefit for that purpose, I think is a, I was really glad to learn of such a program, I'm glad you were able to take advantage of it. One really small wording issue in the resolution, the last whereas on the first page says, the very last one says, whereas the Land Use Committee, obviously, I think it should be the Land and Shore Committee, just a small, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't, I don't, yeah, we're gonna.
We can correct that Scrivener's error.
I don't think I need a former, formal movement to amend, it's just a Scrivener error, but I wanted to point that out.
Noted, and we have that. Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion before we vote? And all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2015-12, approving the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space Classification of the Overdale Homeowners Association and the Wall Properties, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving now to our regular business items, I'm going to suggest that we change the order of 9B and C, that we reverse those, and that we move Agenda Bill 7021, 2015 City Council Goals, to 9B, and that we move Agenda Bill 7020, Transportation Funding Strategy Allocation, down to 9C. And with that, moving to Agenda Bill 6955, 2015 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, we'll begin with a staff presentation, and to kick things off, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Butler, members of the council. This is our big seven-year update of our comprehensive plan, and Trish Hanen is going to walk you through a presentation here momentarily, a brief one, to take you through the journey we've all experienced since May of 2014. I wanted to take just a brief moment to thank the members of the public who weighed in on this comprehensive plan, as well as the council and all of the engagement and work that you've put in, particularly in the last few months. We greatly appreciate it. We worked with every council committee, and we worked extensively with Land and Shore, and Councilmember Martz standing at Land and Shore as well. So we greatly appreciate all the effort, and I think it shows in the product. And before I turn it over to Trish, I also wanted to mention our long-range planning staff and recognize them, Trish Hanen, our manager, Kristin Leeson, and Jennifer R. Woods in the back. All three of them worked really hard on the product that you see, a lot of quick turnaround time, and, you know, really put their hearts and souls into it, and I think it shows in the final product. So with that, I'll turn it over to Trish.
I think Dave closed the presentation, which will make me go even faster. Hover over, hover over. Over this one? This one down here?
Yeah, just hover over. It's exhibit.
God, it's blurry.
Not up there.
Good. We need to ask John Drager about this.
Bottom.
Bottom where? I can't see how to.
Slide.
I wanted to start.
Here.
And we're done. No, we're not. Okay. Thank you all, this is an exciting night, and I'm going to go fast through the presentation, it's mostly for the public, because I know you guys have lived this since March. So tonight, we're just going to go over the public process, talk about the document changes that have happened just since the very last Land and Shore meeting. There's three items that you guys need to decide tonight, and then hopefully, you'll take some action tonight, and that'll be exciting. The public process since May of last year has been intense, all the boards and commissions weighed in, Human Services Arts Commission, Economic Vitality, Planning Policy Commission, every park board, everybody just dug in and loved it, and ripped it all apart, put it all together. It was really exciting to have the seven-year update with so much excitement. And then you all got it, and you got to do the same thing, you ripped it apart, put it back together, and all weighed in on all the exciting parts, and so thank you for all of your time and effort. It was a huge effort, and we're really proud that it made it so much better. And to hear Connie say that she was happy, I mean, goodness gracious, that's, that's really exciting. To me, that's a home run. And of course, this is all the different committee meetings that you've met, that you lived and breathed through. We changed a lot of things, we reorganized a lot of things, we got rid of all the fluffy, really feeling-good, old stuff from when we first adopted it. And here is the first change that was talked about at Land and Shore with Tola in absenteeism, but he was very much there in the room. This was a Stacy comment that was made, and she was uncomfortable with the word authentic, and so she asked that they rewrite that discussion with, instead of authentic, to put the word unique in it. And so I don't know if you want to do these one at a time, there's only the three.
I would think maybe when we get through the presentation.
Or at the end, okay.
There are four parts to the motion, and we can amend the motion to dump some of them if we decide not to do.
Okay. This is Stacy's first one, her other one for Economic Vitality was to take a lot of words in Environmental, or in Economic Vitality A7, and make it very small, maintain a competitive tax structure, so that'll be another one for you all to think about. And her third one was to get rid of A8 completely, about business services and startups. So that's the first one. The second one was more of a question from Tola, but it was a very good question that he raised. Land Use Policy H7 was originally when we were struggling with the bypass as a community, and we wanted to be sure that if we did get a new arterial, there were a lot of guiding principles into what it would look like, how it would perform, how it would, how it would feel within our community. And when we reviewed it, we thought, you know, is there ever a chance we're going to get something that big coming through town? And the more we talked about it, we thought, well, maybe the time for this policy is gone, and we don't need it anymore. And that was the thought that Tola raised. And so, so we're raising it to all of you, if you would like to get rid of H7 when planning for new principal arterials, because we really couldn't think where we would have a new principal arterial. Those are, those are the pretty big roads. So think about that one. And the last one, this was a great one, this was talking about the forested character, and we had a great discussion, and Nina talked about, there was actually two kinds of forested hillsides in the city. Those that look great now, that they're grown in, they're hard to see the development on the hillside, and we love those, and we want to protect those. And there's those that aren't quite as dense yet, they've had some recent development on them, we want to refurbish them, we want to protect them, we want to try to make them look like the ones that we hold so dear and value. And so we tried to capture that by putting that second part in the same policy to show that when you have to make those tough decisions, that it'll be really clear on how we feel about the existing forested hillsides, and how we feel about those that may be arness forested, but we would like them to be forested, maybe not as densely forested as those that are, you know, sort of in their true form, but that we would like to, to try to reforest as much as we're able to, those other areas, to restore them. So this was a great discussion, and this will come along later in your motion. The next year is going to be really exciting, because all the implementation strategies that we took out of the plan, that sadly Stacy isn't here to hear about, but those are going to all be into implementation strategies next year, and you'll get to look at those and figure out, you know, when do you budget them, you know, is it a five-year plan, is it a seven-year plan? And that's going to be really exciting next year. As if you didn't have as much exciting this year, but it's going to be exciting next year as well. Are there questions on the three remaining pieces to decide upon? Any questions of?
Councilmember Martz.
And I, maybe this is at the point where we discuss pro or con, but can you share with me the, why Councilmember Goodman wanted to strike EV policy A8? It had to do with supporting, supporting the success of existing startup businesses?
I don't know the history of it. She wasn't at Land and Shore, it was something that Keith Nevin mentioned, that she had a couple of changes to Economic Vitality that she would speak to tonight, and I, so I don't know the history of those. I do, the only one I do know is that she had trouble with the word authentic, but these two, the other two, I don't know the history of those.
Nina?
May I comment just to this one at this moment? I don't know Stacy's thoughts on this, but I was glad to see this. I brought this up myself in Land and Shore, and then backed down from it, but my interest was that I didn't want to, by policy, this is a very new department, and it's one that we can do now, but as we go through economic cycles, and we might or might not be able to provide such business services and referrals, that my thought was that I didn't want to be so specific about the sorts of things that the city would fund and provide as part of our staffing. And there's a great deal of language in the economic development element that shows all the things that we do and the efforts we're trying to support. So I was, I was kind of glad to see that she had mentioned that.
Yeah, I'd like us to, let's, let's actually get formal motions and out first, then we can have a complete discussion about the questions.
Do you want just questions and staff answers are okay, or do you want a motion to do any kind of questions?
There are a number of motions for each of the items.
I could move it all at once, and then we could talk about anything we want to talk about.
I think there are three individual motions that you have to decide on before we get to adopting the ordinance itself. So I would entertain the first, which would be to approve revisions requested by Councilmember Goodman regarding Economic Vitality, Element Goal D, that whole thing.
Are you moving that?
I'm not. I'm looking for you, someone to move that.
Okay, I will move to approve the revisions requested by Councilmember Goodman regarding Economic Vitality, Element Goal D, discussion replacing authentic with unique, and Policy A7 regarding a competitive tax structure, and deleting Policy A8 regarding business services and referrals.
Second. Moved and seconded, now dealing with those proposed revisions. There are a number of them in the motion, and so we're looking at one of those that is in the motion, and that is to delete EV policy A8. Discussion on that particular one.
I'll ask whether the administration had feedback or recommendation in response to this?
We do. And I, the logic that I heard makes sense to me, we're calling out a specific thing that we're going to do, and that can be done without being really a part of our comprehensive plan.
Right.
Thank you.
Josh?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm trying to find, and I didn't work on this particular policy in the committees that I'm on, at least not that I can recall, I'm trying to find where, if anywhere, in the EV policy, there is an emphasis on, you could use the word promoting, facilitating might be too strong, but emphasizing small and startup businesses, because it's such an important part of our city, the various small businesses that we have down on Front Street, local, you know, family-owned businesses. And I can't find that, and this seemed to be the only place or the only policy that really emphasized the success of startups and small business. And so is there somewhere else where that policy is encapsulated?
There's in Goal B, Economic Vitality Goal B, which sadly mine don't have any page numbers on it, which, how bad is that? But it talks about, continue to recognize the importance of a diverse economy focused on job creation, and it talks about promoting the big businesses and the little businesses, regional partnerships, work to attract businesses that create a diverse economic base, provide goods and services for everyday needs of Issaquah residents, private investment, complementary businesses. I think there's, that was, when I remember Stacy's first comment on the element, was that it didn't talk enough about diversity of businesses, and it didn't talk enough about small businesses. So I'm assuming when it was rewritten, that, that she was happy with, with how they rewrote it. I don't see small business in here just jumping out at me, but I would imagine that that they would have to have mentioned it, because that's such a big part of what they do, of what.
That was my concern, is I didn't see it either outside of this policy, and so if there's a way to incorporate an emphasis, and maybe emphasis is the right word rather than facilitation, and maybe that's, that's the crux of the problem here, is this idea of providing services and referrals may be going a step too far, but finding ways to emphasize and enhance the promotion of small and startup businesses, I would very much want to see something in our comprehensive plan on that.
Yeah, this, the policy AA we're considering right now actually doesn't say small business anywhere, and you can actually read it to say, provide services to existing businesses. It's actually an accurate reading of it, the way it's written right now. So the way it's written, I have kind of an issue with that. If the intent is to be small businesses, it's not, it's actually more expansive than that. I mean, you'd have to assume that all startups are small, which is probably accurate in most cases, but it doesn't actually say that. I wanted to just ask Nina again, it sounded like you, because the original maker of this suggestion isn't here, I mean, can only, are only dependent upon others, but it sounded like you had a similar idea of removing this, this policy. Could you just repeat it now that we're considering the motion?
The specificity in the language was kind of obligating the city, no matter what, to provide business services and ref- what, to provide business services and referrals. And, for instance, and I, and I thought that that was too specific in a policy language and an obligation that doesn't give us the flexibility we may need as cycles, financial cycles change. How about, what if this policy said something more like the other policies such as, just starting at the second line, support the success of existing and startup businesses, something less specific but showing sincere interest? Isn't that's how the language is sometimes in the other statements? It starts with the words support, foster, something softer, but showing an intent that somebody could then interpret as being specific in certain circumstances to be providing business services, et cetera, but not in the policy language.
It's tough. It's tough when you don't have the original, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. It totally makes sense. I don't know if Councilmember Goodman was on a different track because I'm not really... So, it did not come up in safety and services? It came up outside? That's tough. What may I add? I'm sorry.
Let's see if anybody else has spoken yet and wants to make a comment.
Eileen.
I, I'm agreeing with, I think what Naina is proposing actually is very beneficial. The idea of, of us actually talking about providing business services and referrals, I'm not sure that's really our business. That's more something that the chamber could do or the downtown Issaquah Association could provide business services and referrals. But we can absolutely support the success and of existing and startup businesses. That's just saying that we want our businesses within our community to be successful and we can support that. But we're not actually taking steps forward to provide services and referrals.
Seeing a number of heads nod in support of that statement. Mary Lou.
Okay, I wasn't nodding my head. My thought, my thought is that I, I think I understand where Eileen and Nina are headed, but I, and I think then we end up having a, a statement in there that is, you know, supports the success of existing and startup businesses. Do we actually have to say that? I mean, we have this economic, we have an economic vitality commission, we have an economic development department, we have all of that. So, I think we do this. And I'm not really sure that if we pare it down, we're putting anything of substance in there. It's kind of like if we're not in, if we're not doing what it says up there, I'm sort of more on the page with Stacy that it should just come out. I guess that's what I was thinking.
At least I sort of saw two heads nod on that one. And...
Can I come back again?
You betcha.
I actually agree with you. And, and I, I could support, that's probably exactly where Stacy was working towards. And as she began to process through it, it's like, you know, we can do this with...
They are doing it, yeah.
Without this policy.
We pretty much do it on a daily basis.
We do, Naina do.
Josh.
So, the, the concern about, you know, it being something that we do anyway or that it's sort of vague, I mean, that, that can be said about so many of these policies. I look at policy A2, pursue transportation and mobility solutions as addressed in the transportation element. Well, of course, we, we pursue those. So, there's...
Yes, we do.
So, but my concern was, and I agree, and, and maybe I was misreading it as, as Paul pointed out, I was inferring perhaps that when we talk about startup businesses, we're, we're referring to small business naturally. But I just don't see it in any of the policy provisions that it really calls out an emphasis on what I would term as, as small business. And I, I know that we support small business and family-owned business in this city. It's just not called out strongly enough, in my opinion. We've got a lot of stuff in there about different types of businesses and, and a lot of good things on, on being competitive and so forth. But that piece is missing. And so, that's why I read the, the part about startup businesses that way. I mean, if, if it's stricken, I don't think it changes anything, but I just think that emphasis is, is sadly missing.
Paul, I would ask, so the, the motion we're considering is to strike A8. So, I would ask if you, are you prepared to offer an amendment to the motion or an alternative motion? Actually, amendment to the ocean, a motion. Are you prepared to do that? Or do you want, are you, are you ready to address the question, which is the motion?
Well, when, when the suggestion was made by Naina about the, the second sentence staying in, that in my mind seemed to satisfy my concern because it talks about supporting the success of existing and startup, and, and the emphasis on startup businesses, again, in my mind being small business, Naina's suggestion, that's something I would support. So, I'm, I'm not prepared to go into a level of wordsmithing or creating new policies this evening, but I did like Naina's suggestion that the first six words of the policy are unnecessary and something that already gets accomplished, but the remaining nine words of the policy show an emphasis and attention to startups that I think is important for the city to continue promoting and emphasizing and wanting startups to, to come to our town.
So, in an attempt to move things forward, there are two other suggestions that Councilmember Goodman had. We've had some robust discussion around this one. I'd like to move to the next, or the second of her three and, and see where we stand on that. And it's up on the board right now. Do you want to speak to it, Trish?
Again, this was something between Stacy and Keith Niven. I don't know the history of it, other than she likes less words than more words. So, all I can say.
Is there anyone that has any insights to Stacy's thinking on this particular suggested change?
I don't have any insight into what Stacy was looking at in this, but I...
And your insights?
Yeah. But I'm definitely liking the much less words. I sort of took the original policy and, and crossed out a tremendous amount of it and then looked at Stacy's and it's like maintain a competitive tax structure. It says it. We didn't need all of the words, especially some of these words talking about maintain a task, tax structure that is reasonable and allows businesses to shoulder their fair share of the burden of maintaining the city. Some of those really needed to come out. They were quite...
Other, other discussion or ideas? Tola followed by Mary Lou.
I very much like the new language. Competitive tax structure means something different than promoting competitive, competitiveness in the regional economy. And I think it's critical that we, that we do maintain a competitive tax structure compared with our fellow cities on the east side. Thank you.
Mary Lou.
I agree.
Okay, let's move to the next one.
And again, this is getting rid of the word in the first sentence, authentic, and exchanging it for the, the term unique.
Reaction to that? Councilmember Polly.
I think the change is a good one. I don't know what authentic community character really means, but Issaquah definitely does pride itself on being unique. So, I, I like the changes very much.
Okay, so, we've got an agreement of two out of three. Moving back to the other, the one we began with, the proposal is to delete that, that All those in favor of deleting the policy?
Hold on, hold on, it's one motion. We have one motion and we have three considerations.
Well, that's right.
I'm not sure we're ready for the question yet.
So, if, if we vote on the original motion, you're accepting all three changes shown. And if somebody would like to make a motion to consider something different, you can do that.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Share.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just state for the record then that I support the other two changes that were previously mentioned, but I don't support the deletion. So, if the motion is in toto, then I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
We're still having discussion, we're, we're still having discussion, I think. Are you going to...
Who is discussing? I didn't...
Josh, are you, when I'm looking at the policies on, policies A1 through 7, I don't think it hurts to add, but I think it's extra because there's, the other language shows up. It doesn't call out startup businesses. And if that's a concern to you, to say that we want to be a champion in that way and that our policy be a billboard for that, you, you might make a good argument to amend to have that language. But there is so much language here about how we do support businesses of all kinds, which would include startups. I think it might be unnecessary.
Other discussion? Are you ready to act on the motion? All those in favor of approving the motion offered signify by saying aye. Those opposed? That carries six to one with, or five to one with Councilmember Share in the negative. Moving now to item two.
I would like to make a motion to approve revisions requested by Councilmember Milligan regarding land use element policy A5 regarding maintaining the forested character of older developed hillsides and protecting, preserving, and restoring, that's a big one, the forested hillsides which have had recent urban development.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? I'm glad that Councilmember Milligan is here this evening to share her intent with us. Councilmember Polly.
I just wanted to make a comment for the rest of the council members who aren't in Land and Shore. We probably talked about this item more than anything else at all. This was a hugely concerning issue that we wanted to make sure that the right language was in there and what Naina had recommended here, I just think she did a great job. I think it captures the character of what we were looking for really well.
So, the, the language seems ambiguous to me. For those hillside neighborhoods that have recently undergone dense urban development, such as Issaquah Highlands, Talis and Lakeside, for those hillside neighborhoods, protect and preserve the remaining forested hillsides. I'm not sure what that means. For those hillside neighborhoods, protect and preserve the remaining forested hillsides. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, the, the majority of these neighborhoods have been developed and developed densely. However, they do have forested hillsides that remain. For instance, in Issaquah Highlands or near Issaquah Highlands is the King County Island, which is a forested hillside that would, could be considered part of that area. When you look at how the clustering of housing in these neighborhoods, it, it does still retain some forested character.
So, the, it seems to me the phrase, if it's, if it said, protect and preserve the remaining forested hillsides within them, the subject of the sentence is the hillside neighborhoods. And it doesn't say, there's no context for remaining forested hillsides.
Say that again for me.
I said, protect and preserve the remaining forested hillsides within them.
Oh, okay.
And restore the area over time.
Awesome.
Because the subject is the neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
I could add a point into that too, that this was meant to capture the kind of large-scale development you get under a development agreement where large tracts of land are preserved and additional density is provided somewhere else. And it was intended to do two things. And your language clarifies that. It's not a general remaining hillsides around us. It is those hillsides within those large-scale developments that we want to protect. And then the second piece being, in these new developments where we can still see so much, restoration should be a priority in that we want to have, we don't, yeah, see that, there's two, there's two really big pieces to it. So, that's, I always read it that way.
However, Paul, if you say it, if you say remaining forested hillsides in them, as an example, Issaquah Highlands, the, the King County Island is not within the boundaries nor are some of those remaining hillsides. If you look at the boundaries around, I just know Issaquah Highlands so well and I'm sure there are examples around Talis too. So, I just use the neighborhood that I know well. Much of the, when we did the transfer development rights and clustered the housing into the dense housing, there was the King County Park of Grand Ridge that was created and that's in a conservation status. But there are still forested hillsides in the southern, adjacent to, but not within Issaquah Highlands that would not then be covered by this language.
You may capture it above though, in the unedited language. New and infill developments should be compatible through when it is clearing through.
Unless the phrase, Mary Lou has brought up that, that the language may cover it up in the earlier part, but it, both of these paragraphs are so specific about the neighborhoods that I think that that might not do it. I'm really grateful for the help in wordsmithing this, so thank you.
Yeah, so, so again, this is the first time and I'm, so my suggested freight add is that improve the original intent? Is that, do you believe so? Because it is definitely, the context is within the neighborhoods that recently undergone dense urban development.
I didn't think it did, but let me look for, because, because of what I just said, it only, if you say the remaining forested hillsides therein, which I think is what you said.
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Then it does not protect the hillsides that are outside the boundary of the development Well, not all of them are, not all of them are and they change hands sometimes.
No, outside the city limits, I think the boundaries...
So, okay.
...island encompasses the city boundaries. Anything outside of that is unincorporated, King County.
Right, I think they were also talking about Bergsma, for example, that Bergsma is near Talis, but it hasn't been developed yet. And the, the one that was the closest to Issaquah Highlands was the King County Island, which you're right, is still in King County. But it, we were trying to think of all the remaining hillsides that are out there and trying to characterize them. Are they have development on them and, and we want to restore them? Or are they already developed and the council likes the way they look? So, that's, I think they were struggling with how do you characterize them all? So, when the next one comes in, whichever it is, that they would be able to use this policy on how it's developed? Does that help at all?
The intent would be that because Talis is developed, then another property that's not within Talis but adjacent to or nearby Talis that has not yet developed should not develop?
No. No, that's not the case. No, that it would be compatible and have limited, be compatible with its zoning and, and follow these provisions that help protect the forested nature of it, such as clustered development.
That would be the first...
Right, because that would be up here, that new and infill development would be compatible.
And there's another phrase, a couple lines down, limiting the size of development, number of buildings within clusters. So, for instance, say the Bergsma property, they can benefit from that by putting buildings in clusters and preserving forested land.
Right, I think, I think the first sentence covers what you're talking about there. But the language that Paul suggested would, would clarify that second sentence.
Yes.
So, I, so, it clarifies it, but I'm not sure it clarifies it per your intent. I think it, so, because this, the, the addition goes on, it says, it, so it assumes that outside the recently developed areas, there are places that need restoration. That's the way this language reads.
Or protection.
Yeah, and, and so that's pretty, that's, I struggle with that because if it's, it all depends on how it's zoned. It depends on what the land...
All right. And this isn't...
What the land owner wants to do compatible with that zoning and the land uses there. This is kind of, this, I can read this and it thinks, it's, it kind of reads in there that there's assumed that there's some type of disruption and needs to be restored, preserved and/or restored. And that, that just, that's, I mean, I, that's the way I read this. And I'm not sure that's the intent. And I'm not sure that's the intent.
No, it's not. It's not intending to change any zoning or use, it's just intending to optimize the preservation of forested character where it can, when those properties are developed.
Right, and just to jump in, Paul, that's why we included at the bottom what we meant by, what they meant, when they talked about restoration, that it wasn't that the landowner has to take a hit of some sort, it was that we could be doing tree plantings in places where the city owns, in parks, or in critical area buffers, or other areas, so that it's not that the property owner has to take the burden of the council wanting it to be restored, that the city could try to do that with the properties that it might have up there.
Paul, just add a few more comments about, I think, when we were first talking about this, some of this language is originally from the comp plan, and we had asked Trish and staff to come up with some additional language, because we weren't sure if the version that we had in the original comp plan would get us the outcome that we wanted. And so there was a lot of thought about if whether even these two should be together. At one point, you were talking about a brand-new policy, and Trish thought that they could put these two together, but we are really trying to cover a whole bunch of different situations under one very, very long policy statement. We're trying to talk about the older neighborhoods, in the eventuality that somebody was purchased a lot of land up on Squawk Mountain, and wanted to come to the city and talk about development agreement with, you know, density. We really want to make sure our density ends up where we want it now, which is the central Isaguah area. And that with the two new large areas that we have, Talis and Highlands, we wanted to make sure that there's some sort of commitment in there to working through their future to change the look of it a bit, but there were compromises made where they were given density and preserved other area, and wanted to give them credit for that, that there were some large ridge lines that were preserved. That was the compromise for giving them some density. And then also, working with Trish to identify all those parcels that we know about, not my hypothetical situations, but other ones that are out there, and would this cover the vision that the city would have for those areas? So maybe there's just too much going on in here? Maybe it makes more sense to pull it apart again? I don't know.
I have a suggestion. I agree, thank you, Mary Lou. I think there are way too many words in here. And one thing that I didn't like about, as a policy statement, was the specificity of calling out certain neighborhoods. And that, one thing that I want to express is that I've been a little dogged about this, not for my own self, but because I feel that there's a great deal of pride and value that has been expressed throughout the document about forested hillsides, and that was being taken out because it was implementation language. And we did a really great update to this comp plan by removing implementation language. Now, when we took that out, then there was, there was something left, a hole that was left that needed to be filled, and this was an effort at doing that. And what I wanted to help bring about was the same kind of spirit that the council and I hear the public in their pride of Squawk Mountain, and to make it a broader thing. And not to change Isaguah Highlands, or change Talis, but one of the very poignant comments was that, well, when Squawk was built, all the trees were taken down, and you look at Squawk forty years ago, and it didn't look like it did today. But over time, with street trees and plantings, I see, I've been in Isaguah Highlands for ten years now, and the trees are growing quite large, and it's becoming forested. It's not going to be a Douglas fir forest again, but it has a tree, treed character because of, because the design in Isaguah Highlands was to plant a street tree every thirty feet, which is pretty aggressive compared to what other people do, and that is good. I would have suggested, and I started wordsmithing, to pull out the neighborhood names and come down to a simpler line that would say something such as maintain the forested character and older, of older developed hillsides requiring that new and infill development should be made compatible through, and those specific suggestions. And then the next, for those hillside neighborhoods that have recently undergone dense urban development, protect and preserve remaining forested hillsides and restore the developed area over time, so that it once again retains, attains the status. That's where I was headed to make it more succinct. Again, I'm appreciating the comments that, because I hope that this is helping the city that wants to now put development on the valley floor and preserve and restore its forested hillsides, which are part of its very definition.
Other questions or comments?
So this is what committee is like. This is committee work here at a regular council meeting. You brought proposed new language, and we're kind of getting to see it and discuss it for the first time. So thank you for bearing with us, because this is what happens in committee. So, the original language, I think, is good. That's not the added language, I'm talking about the original. I think that's really good. And I think you are adding a distinct new policy, and this language is, I like the intent, but I don't think this, this language is ready for inclusion. I wouldn't, I don't think the language is there.
The second paragraph, the truck changes paragraph.
I don't, so.
I'll jump in then and take just the opposite view, because I completely support this. I think this is spectacular language that's been proposed, and it really gets to the heart of what Naina was talking about, which is the value of having forested hillsides. And, you know, I think about the, the sort of pinkish-orangeus-colored wall I see every day from my bedroom window, that tower is fifty feet above the hill. And I hope it's fifty feet, because that's what it was supposed to be. You know, and the idea that someday, the hope, I think, is that there can be a way to cover that up, or there can be trees replanted, or something that, you know, you don't, I mean, you can probably see that thing from space, you can certainly see it from the valley floor. And that's just one, you know, tiny piece of new development in the urban village. We've got other areas, too. We've got Lakeside that's going to be developing, and certainly there's standards and requirements with that development of Lakeside. But the idea here, the way I read this, is to ensure that we begin to fill in any gaps that are not covered by these development agreements, or things that have just fallen through the cracks in the development of Talis, or the Highlands, or any of these other newer dense neighborhoods on the hills. And I don't read it to change in any way future development plans, or affect things that are necessarily outside these neighborhoods, because everything that comes after the words for those hillside developments that have recently undergone dense urban development, right? Everything after that opening clause, that opening clause controls all the subsequent language. So, you know, it might be a little confusing, because you're talking about undergone in the past tense, but then you're talking about preserving in the future tense, and that might be adding to some of the confusion. But it makes sense to me, and I think the intent of this is very clear, and it fits with the goals of the community. So I would, I would support this as written, whether the neighborhoods are in there, the specific neighborhoods or not.
May I, may I ask? I was trying to see in the bill, and I couldn't tell, whether the administration has a recommendation in response to this proposed change?
I think we were fine with it.
All right, thank you. So, given that, I have heard a lot of interesting arguments here this evening, I'm going to defer to Land and Shore. I believe that Land and Shore did spend a lot of time on this, having gotten to sub recently. They spent a lot of time on a lot of things. And I understand some of the concerns, but I'm going to defer to them and support this. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
Just a comment. I mean, I think, I struggled a lot with this as well, Paul, how to put it together, and I think sometimes that's the birth of new policy languages that comes out a little clunky at first, but I felt like the protections that it offered for the hillsides was so important to strengthen, that I really supported Naina in her efforts working with staff. So maybe in the future, this might look a little different at some point, but I think we're getting what we think the citizens want to see. So, it's a little awkward, it's a little long, there's a lot of words, but I don't know that we would be successful trying to wordsmith it tonight. So I'm, I'm in favor of the addition from councilmember Milligan.
Another question, then, if I may? So, the, it says, restore the area over time so that it once again attains forested character. Now, is that, is it your, is it your intent that every place that has been densely developed would retain, would restore to a forested character?
This was the, this was the best way that we could simplify language, to try to, in one example, to describe how Squawk Mountain, which seems to be the mountain that everyone wants to preserve its forested hillside, and not the others. But I'd like them all to have this similar consideration, and Squawk Mountain had a period of restoration after it was built. So this was the best that we could do for that.
Okay, so that's my real concern. You're never, Squawk Mountain doesn't have anything close to the densities. Not even close. We're never gonna, you're always gonna see mostly buildings in the dense areas, just like you can, you know, Somerset on the west side of Cougar Mountain from Lake Washington or Seattle. It's gonna look like that forever, because it's so dense, and so, so this, if this aspires this to be, you know, something, everything eventually looks like Squawk Mountain, I think we're setting ourselves, we're not gonna. The density itself precludes everything from looking forested. So that's kind of my concern. The idea of there being a really good canopy where it's possible, I mean, I think that's the intent, and that's fantastic. And where it was disturbed, in other, perhaps temporarily, so that the development could come in, and so that that disturbed area, that's not developed, could be, you know, grow a new canopy. I think those are the goals, but I, I'm, I don't know that we can ever achieve that Highlands isn't going to look like Squawk Mountain. It just never will, because of the, in the dense areas. So that's probably the core of my concern, that expresses it best.
And that's, that's a great point. I did have a conversation with Keith about provisions within, I believe just the Talis Development Agreement, we didn't talk about Highlands, and about how there are long-term maintenance conditions in there that, there's an expectation of a certain level of vegetative screening, and you're right, it's not going to look like Squawk, you'll still see houses and windows and all the rest of it. But there is an expectation in the agreement that over time, the hillside itself greens up a bit. I mean, it doesn't set any kind of standard, it doesn't talk about Squawk Mountain, but I think that's the point that's in here. Now that you're saying it the way you did, that makes a whole lot more sense to me. But yes, the committee wasn't thinking anything along the lines of Isaguah Highlands and Talis someday looking like Squawk. Just that more can be done, and the expectation is that larger mature trees should be planted when they can be planted, so that there is some greening. But that was just a conversation I just had with Keith about that. I didn't know that was in the Talis Development Agreement. I didn't recognize that was there. And when he told me about it, I went, that's great, that's my expectation. I expect someday, ten or fifteen years from now, it's going to look a little different than it does right now. So, anyway.
I think it's okay in this plan to have aspirational language. I think that this provides, I think, one of the things that isn't clear is that some of the language of above represented iterations that we worked on with city staff. There was a really strong interest in making a strong statement about canopy, and about heading in a, aspirationally heading in a direction that results in more canopy, getting up to our 52 percent, I think. And so, you know, I, I agree with all the statements, it's never, it's never going to look like Squawk, and it can't because of the density, as you mentioned. But I think this gives guidance that down the road, when issues come before the council that could potentially result in more canopy, it would say that it's a priority for the city. Thanks.
I have a follow-up about the comparison to Somerset, and I'm not a very fast reader, I'm trying to look at this very quickly, but I have spent some time hiking around there, it's got great hills for walking. But Somerset, I believe, and I'm looking at some language here that's discussing, that a frustration that neighbors have between views and trees, and one of the things that I was very careful about in exploring this language is that there are no view covenants in Isaguah Highlands except for on Harrison, right? Thank you. And so, the ability to allow the trees to grow without being in a fight over a view covenant, like Somerset appears to be having. So Somerset may not have this opportunity that we do because of that, but because we don't have view covenants, we can allow nature to take a course. It will help to restore for habitat and all the benefits for the community that are listed in the bottom.
Okay, I'll just make.
You know, we were, we worked through this so long that night, and I think maybe we finally felt that we got it. But as you sit here and read, you can pick out some pieces that, that are just not quite flowing as well as they should, or presented as well as it should. But the basic concept idea is that we really want to maintain the canopy within this community and this area. I don't want to say no to this and have this all disappear and not be a policy. And I'm not sure if we can wordsmith it this evening and all come to an agreement, I don't think that's in the cards. So for all of its probably poor grammar, long sentences, I still support the basic concept that's behind this.
Paul, final round of comments on that. So, I'm really glad to hear that the spoken, the intent was not for everything to turn out like Squawk Mountain. As much as, as great as that would be, I think I, I hit, for me, I was able to put a fine point on my concern, is that we can't achieve that. But, but this aspires to do whatever we can, wherever we can. And if that's the intent, and our very excited senior planner, Trish, you know, can remember that and capture that as well, then I definitely would go along with it.
Any other final comments before we act on the motion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of supporting the motion as discussed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
I would like to move to approve the revisions requested by councilmember Marts to delete land use element policy H7 regarding the design of new principal arterials.
It's been moved and seconded, and there is on the screen what has been proposed. Questions or discussion? Naina?
I'm going to take a second to say thank you, Tola. When I read this, I thought, what on earth? And I just didn't feel like I had the capacity to challenge it. But Tola Marts, with six screens on his table and staying up till one o'clock in the morning, not once, but at least twice, he can get to the bottom of such things. I'm really glad that you dug deep and found out where this came from and why we had it. And I support the removal. Thank you.
Mary Lou followed by Josh.
I agree with Naina. I just, at some point, when you're reading a hundred and some pages of a document, your brain just turns off a little bit. This totally confused me, but I forgot to ask a question as well. So now that they went back, the staff went back and told us the reason, it doesn't seem to make sense to leave this language in anymore.
Josh?
I don't know how we missed this in infrastructure, since we, I think, addressed all the comp plan elements at one point or another in that committee, whether within our purview or not. But I would point out one thing as it relates to the definition of principal arterial, because that is actually contained in transportation policy G7, which includes, although we have a definitional section for the comp plan, the definitions of principal minor and collector arterials, along with local streets, are in that T policy G7. Principal arterials are defined as roads, I'll paraphrase, carrying the highest traffic volumes and longest trips, containing regional and intercity bus routes and transit centers, service to abutting land use is subordinate to travel service provided by principal arterials, which, I'm not sure I understand that sentence. But essentially, we're talking about major roads. We're talking about State Route 900, and East Lake Samamish Parkway, a front street south that's allowing large volumes of traffic in and out of the city. And, you know, when you look at this policy, we're not planning any new principal arterials. You know, there may be some new roads in the city as part of the central area plan, but they're not principal arterials. but they're not principal arterials as defined by that policy. I wanted to just point out one other thing in connection with that, though. I was gonna get to this later, but it fits in here. T policy G8 says facilitate the smooth flow of traffic on major arterials through signal coordination and other available technologies. And so while we're talking about principal arterials for a second, I just want to point out, the word major arterials in T policy G8 is not defined, and I think that meant to say principal and not major, because there is no such thing as a major arterial in the T policy, from what I can tell. So I think that T policy G8 was designed to point out that when we develop new roads or fix existing roads, that we are trying to facilitate the flow of traffic on the larger roads and not so much on the side street roads, which was the main thing I pointed out on our Newport Maple Desunset that we were actually doing the opposite of. But needless to say, I think the word major in T policy G8 probably should be the word principal. I don't think it's, it's something that requires any sort of amendment per se, because it's a wording definitional fix, but I leave that to you to take a look at in the final filling in of Xs and Os on this. But I support this.
Tola?
Well, I would certainly like to thank my fellow council members for their kind words. Yes, indeed, I did have at 1.6 screens up simultaneously. I really want to thank Trish and the staff, this, you know, this is one particular element, but we had just, for the members of the public at home, this was such an involved process across three different committees, and staff was so gracious and so responsive to all of our questions that it was, it was really wonderful. And I also want to thank the Rhapsody Music Streaming Service that allowed me to play all the, all the 80s new wave that allowed me to work until the We Are. Thank you.
Any other comments before we act on this motion? Seeing none and all those in favor for approving the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously?
I would like to move to adopt ordinance number... 2741. As revised?
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to start off with just a few comments. I didn't have any questions, but I just wanted to make sure that the viewing public knew this evening that the lengthy discussion we've just had are really just on three sets of items that came up in the last few weeks, at the very end of many, many, many hours of edits and review of edits. So Land and Shore alone met for more than seven hours in meetings reviewing it, and probably many, many more hours than that, reviewing the material before they got there. So just, so that everyone is aware, there were a lot more amendments than the ones that were discussed tonight. All those amendments received extensive discussion deliberation in multiple committees, including Land and Shore, and also at a council work session. So this is the culmination of a lot of staff and a lot of elected time over a period of months, and I thank everybody for that. I also wanted to put a second comment out, is that when we move, if we move to approve this and we move into a second phase, which is looking at implementation strategies, I'd like to make the suggestion that the council and staff, or the council leadership and staff, meet to discuss what the expectations might be around that before we begin moving into some sort of implementation phase documentation, because I think there's a lot of different ideas out there about what the next phase looks like. And those are my two comments.
Other comments? Councilmember Share?
Thank you. Just a few thoughts on the, on the overall plan. So first of all, and this actually, I think, is perhaps the most critical comment I want to make, because it's going to be an issue that carries on beyond my tenure on the council, I have a feeling at least that it will. And that's specifically in the land use element, and I'm looking particularly at page 2 of 30, it's really from the very first page, page 1, 2, and 3 of 30, but it talks about our adopted housing and jobs targets. And on page 2, it says, we've applied to have the Central Isaguac Urban Corps as a regional growth center. And as part of that, we're required to have adopting, adopted housing and jobs goals in addition to adopted state mandated housing and job targets. And then when you look at the bottom of page 2, it says, Central Isaguac, including the goals adopted for Regional Growth Center, are expected to accommodate 7750 new housing units and 19225 new jobs. This is 2,000 housing units over the adopted state housing targets, and it's a little under on the jobs target, which might have to be addressed as a separate issue. But the reason I bring this up is because then, when you go down further in the land use element to page 5, it talks about potential annexation areas. And I think it's very important to note that our comprehensive plan that's before us, along with the Regional Growth Center designation and the Central Isaguac plan, serve enough growth when it comes to housing targets, that it does not appear necessary to put more housing in a potential annexation area in order to satisfy those targets. They will be per se satisfied if all growth comes to pass under the Regional Growth Center, Central Area Plan, and Comp Plan as presented. So I think it's a very important point, when you read this document and this council takes this issue up in future months and future years, that there is no need to put more housing in a PAA to satisfy those targets. There may be other compelling reasons, but not for purposes of satisfying GMA. So, point one. Point two, page 15 of 30 of the land use element talks about sustainability. I think this, I think we addressed this in infrastructure, and I really like the language that we came to a consensus about in terms of being a regional leader on sustainable development, and this fits very well, people may notice, with our green building goal that we talked about at the retreat. And I love that buzzword from Mr. Traeger elevating the game that he brought out in our breakout session, but that really fits in here with sustainability as well, that we continue to be creative and innovative and be a regional leader. Transportation policy, H6, that talks about having a light rail station in Isaguac, and I would just say, that policy probably should be engraved rather than just merely written, because it's gonna get repeated in this comp plan for quite a while. I don't see that on the short time horizon, so you can probably just use permanent ink and leave that in there, unfortunately. And then, the next point is, just as you move into the next round of comprehensive plan amendments and updates and so forth, since you'll get to do that without me, I would really encourage, and I think we've talked about this both in committee and maybe even a little at the retreat, but that we should take a look as a city at creating a public safety element to the comprehensive plan, and within that element, including emergency management policies. It's one area of this plan that I believe is sorely lacking. We do not have that particular, I mean, we have some aspects of it, we have fire level of service, we have police level of service, but it's not an element. And so, that, that I believe should really be called out and categorized as a separate element, and there can be more enhancement on policy around emergency management and community protection as well. And so we've got elements for so many other aspects of our community's life, but that one is not there. And so I would really hope that in the coming years, that the city looks, at least takes a look at doing something like that, and whether that would be beneficial as part of the comprehensive plan. This has been quite an effort, and I really appreciate the hard work that's been put in by the folks up here on the dais and the folks out there in the audience, the staff, who have come to all of our committee meetings and long committee meetings, and answered questions about things that were not within the scope of that committee meeting. And so I really appreciate the work that's gone into it, and so I think everybody really deserves a pat on the back for the effort here. This has been Herculean in nature, so I will fully support moving forward on this plan, and whether it be the nitty gritty or the aspirations, it's all important for the future of this community. So, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Marts?
You know, when we started a couple of years ago, we, a couple of years ago, both Stacy and Paul, I think, started asking people to take a look at council goals with respect to the comp plan. And I did not know the comp plan as well as I should have. And this is extraordinarily powerful document as to what we aspire to be as a city, and I am gonna be very supportive of it tonight. I also want to think about, we're gonna have at least two new council members this fall, and I think that we wanna, it would be good to think about, how do we make sure that future councils, as they arrive, are briefed on this document and understand it coming in, because I think it would be very helpful. I, when I started on council, I know that there was some sort of council training, and I was out of town and I didn't get it, and so, you know, I just think this is very, very important for future office holders in the city to understand. Thanks.
Anyone else before we act? Seeing none and all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2741 as revised, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously?
Aye.
Moving now to...
Congratulations, Trish.
Agenda Bill 7021, 2015 City Council Goals. This is the result of our council retreat, and with that, we're joined at the podium by Deputy City Administrator Emily Moon for the staff presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. The city council did meet recently to review proposed goals for next year, incorporation into the budget for next year, and for one goal that is under consideration later tonight for action in 2015. The result of those deliberations was the preliminary approval of a variety of council goals. First one has to do with complete streets, and very simply, that is to develop a policy for funding complete streets, projects, and to ensure funding in subsequent budgets. That particular goal lays out a more elaborate sort of description, and also lays out a plan for implementation. And that implementation plan includes drafting a policy and a strategy for complete streets, and incorporating that policy and strategy into a subsequent budget. The next council goal that's moving forward for consideration is emergency management invest, investments, and that would develop a mechanism to supply enhanced information to the public, and also identify capital resources that are either needed or that are in our plans but should be labeled as emergency management investments and called into attention for that purpose. On this particular goal, the action items that we will pursue would be to develop some outreach mechanisms, such as webpages that would supply the public with information about particular emergencies and how to become prepared for those emergencies. We'd also create a separate list in the capital facilities plan of proposed emergency management projects and equipment, and assess whether additional items are needed to meet those The next proposed goal was green building strategies, to develop and analyze those strategies and work towards being a regional leader. And the action items for this particular goal would be to write a short and long-term goal statement for green building innovation, and develop a project schedule, and select a consultant that would help us with that work. And then we would create a menu of leading practices and conditions that are needed for innovation. And after analyzing our strengths and limitations, we would create a report to describe opportunities for creating that green building leadership and innovation. And then we would engage key audiences to help us produce the strategies for implementation. Ultimately, that would result in us preparing a recommendation for council's consideration and adopting an action strategy. The next is to pilot a neighborhood engagement program, and the action items under that goal would be to pursue some grant funding for that position. Alternatively, we will attempt to put funding in the budget for that position, would be a half-time person to manage the program and to carry it out. And initially, would, the scope of work would involve identifying neighborhood organizations and contacts, reaching out to those neighborhoods, and offering an opportunity for them to host city staff and council members, and then attending those meetings and sharing information with the neighborhoods, gathering input from neighbors as to concerns and desires and success with our service delivery, I hope. And then we would provide a summary report to the city council to talk about what successes we've had with that program, or modifications that would be needed. And then we would ask if the council would like to continue with that program and incorporate any other implementation steps at that time. The next is labeled public engagement, and it focuses on improving council deliberations through timely public engagement. And the action steps here would be to implement technology and operating plans so that we would be able to televise council committee meetings, and to develop a plan to better inform council members of our work on social media, and the dialogue that's occurring there with our residents in particular. And then we would conduct quarterly meetings with council committee chairs, with our communications team, and discuss our communication plans on the most significant city initiatives or issues of the day. The next proposed goal is to create a regional agenda, and this regional agenda would help to focus us on utilizing the city's resources on issues that are of importance to the city. The action steps include identifying entities and forums that we would like to engage with, and describing those organization's functions, and then evaluating each to determine if they are aligned with the policy objectives of the city. And then we would develop and present a policy for council's consideration and an implementation plan for that regional agenda. After that, we'd use that agenda to help us make appointments and guide our applications to regional boards and commissions. Those are seats that sometimes volunteer appointees take, and in other cases, they are appointments of staff. Then we would implement that regional agenda, and subsequent years, we'd update the agenda to make sure that it reflects our policy objectives, and we would make changes to the policy if that's needed as well. Another proposed goal is to increase cooperation and engagement with the Isaguac School District regarding growth, and those action items include pursuing, establishing ongoing joint staff meetings between city staff and the school district staff, and that would occur two times a year. We would also develop and host a roundtable and strategy workshop with district staff to occur every two years to share ideas about how to manage school population growth and how we might partner to create additional capacity, but also how to do that, being cognizant of our land use plans. And then lastly, we have a proposed goal of the transportation funding strategy, and this would be to develop a plan this year for raising funds for motorized and non-motorized transportation improvements. The action items here would be to take action tonight to repurpose the mobility master plan allocation to support this goal, and to prepare a work plan and possible timeline for implementing this goal. This is a multiple-step goal. Next, we would identify and analyze the... Next, we would identify and analyze the plausible funding strategies that we could use to complete those projects. We would conduct a survey to gauge preferences, tolerances, and timing, and we would present survey findings, consultant recommendations, the funding strategy, and proposed package of projects to the city council. And then based on that work, the council would then determine what the next steps And those action items right now are slated to be completed by the end of August, under the timeline that we had discussed at the retreat. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Emily. You told me at least that you were, in compiling these summary sheets, you were going to reach out to the primary sponsors of each goal, and give them a chance to review the draft and get feedback to you in a timely fashion so that you could have it prepared by the end of last week for consideration this evening. I just want to double-check if indeed everybody had an opportunity to work with Emily on their goals or summary sheets. Josh, did you have an opportunity?
I did, and I'll comment on one of them when I comment in a little bit, but yes, I did have that opportunity.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just know that that was important, and I appreciate the extra effort taken to get it done in such a timely manner. I think it's definitely a good work product as a result. Okay, I just want to just see if we were able to follow through on that, so thank you very much.
Certainly.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve the 2015 city goals, city council goals as presented.
Second?
Moving to seconded, questions or discussion? Councilmember Martz, Milligan, and Cher, in that order.
Oh, I think Paul was before me.
Oh, was he?
I was facing this way, sorry. I can go last.
So I would like to thank Council President Winterstein and Deputy President Goodman. We have come so far. I remember the first year that I was on council, and we all sort of round-robin, we all showed up with ideas, and we said, "Oh, I got another one." Do-do-do-do-do. "Oh, I got another one." Do-do-do-do-do. And we had, I don't know, we started off with 50 or 60. So these goals really represent so much of a focus on, you know, council's strategic input to the city. This is not, you know, please fix a pothole on Idlewood Drive. I mean, not that the previous goals were, but I mean, the process has gotten better and better, and Paul, I want to thank you. You have continued to craft this process very well, and I'm very happy with this, and will be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. I wanted to comment about how satisfying this process was. The staff was very helpful, and I, just to share a little bit on how it worked for me and my goals, you know, we think we own these goals, but I know you all are like me, we try to strike at the heart of something that's very important to the city, something that we've heard people talk about since the last time we got together, and what can we really contribute that'll make a difference for many people, and be very succinct about it. And I came into the goal-setting retreat thinking that, and indeed, they were quite imperfect goals, but I was excited about the collaborative process, and it was very well-managed by the administration with very capable handlers and facilitators for us. And so I know that my goals came out quite a bit better than when they came in, and it's, I'm really happy about that. But most of all, I want to thank Paul and Stacy for making this a really productive and meaningful job. You really focused us in on how to make it work and how to make it mean something, and I think without the leadership of you two, it would not have been such a quality process. So thank you very much.
Council President Winterstein.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks for those comments, and really, everybody, job well done. A lot of, very thoughtful goal submittals, very thoughtful, and I was also very pleased with the degree of collaboration that there was ahead of time, and especially find satisfying your comment there, Naina, about how through the process, something you strove to hit the heart of something that was really important to you and for the city, and yet, and I'm sure your initial submittal did that, and yet, through the process, it got even better to your satisfaction. So I hope that, I think that just means there's a better outcome or better work product, and the facilitation of your staff, and your own work, Emily, and your staff contribute to that significantly. And, you know, there was, for those that weren't there, there was a lot of very good, candid discussions during the breakout sessions where a lot of the reformation and clarification happens. I think similarly, during the deliberations, there was very candid and often very passionate discussion, and again, I do see it as a sign of a successful process, went some significant transformations, and I think the, I know it happens, we combine goals, and the schools' goals, the two were combined into one, and I know that was, they're both quite transformations from the original proposals, and I think the emergency management went through quite a transformation as well. So, and that's a very constructive way to work, and in the net, it's going to really benefit, you know, the citizens of Isaguas. So I just want to repeat again, thanks to all the staff members who reviewed the proposed goals, prepared the responses, and then planned for and facilitated the retreat. Thanks to them, a large part, we're here tonight in large part do their efforts, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Cher.
Thank you. Three points. So first, I want to echo the comments about the great collaborative effort. I really appreciate everyone here, and Stacy, who's not here, working on the number of goals that I sponsored, to help really hone in on what was feasible and practical and cost-effective, and I think, you know, Paul, you mentioned the emergency management one. You know, when I first proposed that, I had a little bit of aspirational language and kind of a broad scope of things to come out of that, but really through the breakout, the workout session, whatever it was called, the small group, you know, we were able to hone in and get rid of, I think, $30,000 in costs on that one, really focus on what the two key components of that one were. So that was extremely beneficial exercise to go through that. I'm really glad that we've dropped something we used to do many years ago where we would spend, I don't know how many hours, reviewing everything that was done in the work plan for the entire year. As I used to comment, I was here, I know what happened, so I'm really glad we've moved away from that and started moving to forward-thinking. And I really appreciate the staff responses this year as well. You know, on the green building goal, I mean, when we were asked in the group, you know, what is the action plan, I said, "There it is." The staff response from the sustainability team, that was precisely the action plan to implement. So there was, like, nothing to change there, but we still got some good feedback in iterations, and, you know, the chief of police had some great comments on the green building goal. We had great comments from other department heads, so it was really a great teamwork that came to create all of these. So, second point, you know, it's funny, as Tola pointed out, we've developed more over the years, our thinking and our process, but, you know, the more things change, the more they stay the same, and I went back to my notes from the April 12, 2008 city goal-setting retreat, which was my very first one, this being my last one, at least to my current capacity, and the 2009 goals that I wrote down, the first one was transportation, and in that goal, I wrote down complete streets. Survey: Enhance ITS After Inclusive Public Process. Well, now we're going a little beyond ITS, we're going into some much bigger things we'll talk about in a few moments, and then, you know, some other subparts to that goal. The second one was financial management, and taking a conservative approach to fiscal management, and I think we see that pervade our current goals with the estimated cost and the way we look at goal-setting in general. The third one was sub-area plan and city development, and a sub-point under that was fostering neighborhoods. This is April 2008. Fourth was sustainability, green building, strategic plan. So all of this was there in 2008. And then finally, regional influence, and legislative agenda, and education of council members, and regional meetings, and, you know, so much of that is adopted once again. So, you know, it does, I guess, beg the question of why we seem to have the same themes that keep repeating themselves, and, you know, where we stand in the process of perhaps checking these off, or perhaps these are just things that go on and on and on, year by year, decade by decade, and we just kind of further tweak them a little bit, because they are all major themes. The third final point I wanted to make is on the complete streets goal. I spoke with Emily about that one. So that goal, and again, thanks to Paul and Stacy for really helping to hone in on what we were looking for, and it was Stacy who pointed out in the small group that we don't have a policy for using complete streets funds. We have an ordinance that talks about complete streets and making all roadways into complete streets where feasible, but we don't really have a policy on how to spend those dollars that get put into the budget every year, or so we hope, on sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, ADA compliance, other things, what I would call the smaller projects, or maybe some of the walk-and-roll projects. And so when we're looking at the sheet, you know, that was put up there, I don't think that developing the policy is going to take as long, and I know there's a lot on the plate of city staff and the administration, but, you know, we're not talking about concurrency here. We're talking about a policy for a single fund of dollars, and we know historically how those dollars get spent. It's a matter of finding the right words, codifying it for future implementation. My hope, and Stacy's already given me the task of looking at other jurisdictions and MRSC and so forth, you know, my hope is that in committee, we can start tackling this topic this year, and so I don't think the implementation needs to occur in the 2017, 18, whatever you had up there, that budget, I think the implementation could be one year earlier. I don't think, once you have policy and you have implementation, that's the goal. So that one, I think, might be a little too conservative, because I think we can accomplish some of it this year, and it's not going to require the inordinate amount of staff time that you might suspect, because this is nowhere as detailed as what we went through with concurrency. I mean, that was, that was big. This is complete streets. So that would be the one tweak on the schedule, but it doesn't change the substantive goal.
Anyone else before we act? Seeing none, then all those in favor of approving the 2015 city council goals as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving to our last regular business item, Agenda Bill 7020, Transportation Funding Strategy Allocation. Emily, you want to kick this one off?
Sure. Be happy to. This is a request to reallocate funds that were originally appropriated for the Mobility Master Plan. That's a plan that we are proposing, we put on hold, and the primary reason for that is that we believe we have completed the most substantial pieces of that plan. You have taken significant action over the last year in particular to adopt a new concurrency policy. We've also gathered a significant amount of information about projects that we need to complete, and about our transportation systems deficiencies, and so this request is really asking you to allow us to repurpose those funds so that we can get to work this year on the public funding strategy that we talked about as one of your council goals. Those funds would allow us to pull together the remaining data that we need in order to provide you with the information you need to determine if we're ready to go ask voters for their share of the funding for those projects.
Any questions of Emily at this time? I would entertain a motion.
Yes, I would move to approve redirecting the Mobility Master Plan budgeted allocation of $75,000 to the transportation strategy, transportation funding goal.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion?
Yeah, hopefully this is a formality, I think we discussed it a week ago Saturday, but I also wanted to add is that there were some comments tonight about whether or not this sheet reflects where we ended up, and I can say, it's one of the reasons I asked earlier, did everybody get a chance to kind of review theirs ahead of time, and Emily, thank you, I know Stacy and I worked with Emily online on the language of this, and it absolutely captures, I think, the intent. Yeah, we spent a lot of time in that discussion about a specific potential outcome, but the intent always was, is, or the way it ended up, and I think it's reflected here, is that there's going to be some work done between now and the end of July and in August, this council will be able to consider a recommendation from the administration on how we may proceed. And so the scope of it was largely as defined in the original goal, is largely scoped by what we accomplished in concurrency, what we just adopted in our transportation improvement plan, and so I think all, there's an unbroken line between the original scope and this plan right here for defining a best, help us define a best strategy for the funding, for what I would call the unfunded part of the package from concurrency. The only thing I would add is, a moment ago, too, Emily said the most significant portions, and I would say we certainly have identified significant portions. I think the original vision for the Mobility Master Plan also, and when we get to that, we will have to address parking, that was in the scope as well. I still think that that's significant, and something I think we can even take a look at in this effort as well. So, thank you.
Other questions or discussions? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in, because this was very important to me, too. I really appreciated this goal last year, and one of the driving factors was to be proactive and to decide what are solution-based decisions rather than convenience-based decisions in transportation planning, so I was really excited about the Master Mobility Plan, but in, and so then, it seems threatening to take away that plan, or to shelve that plan for now. However, the concurrency discussion was very robust, and it brought about some strategy in this we worked on. Help me remember what it's called, when you increase the off, that when it's not a vehicle.
Non-motor, non-single occupancy.
Yeah, the, when you, the Central Isaguas Plan had an assumption that a certain amount of...
Mode split.
Pardon me?
Mode split.
Mode split, yeah. And so in the concurrency planning, we were proactive and strategic in saying we wanted to increase the mode split away from single-occupant vehicles into other things, by 10%.
10%.
And so we have accomplished some of these things, but I wanted to take a moment tonight to, although I support this wholeheartedly because of the concurrency discussion increased the urgency for us to address the unfunded share, and the unfunded share that's identified is about $100 million, as we've bandied about earlier, but there's still that much that we are expecting other public entities to fund, and as we know, that that's not a guaranteed source. So we have a significant challenge, this needs to be done now. I totally support it, but I, since I won't be here after this year, I implore those of you who will to come back to the Master Mobility Plan and to carry that out.
Anyone else deciding to comment or questions? And all those in favor of approving redirecting the Mobility Master Plan budgeted allocation of $75,000 to the transportation funding goals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to good of the order. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was one issue in front of the SCA pick that unfortunately, pick needs feedback actually before the next pick meeting, and it's due to some complicated timing on the part of issues that are going before, I think, I believe the King County Council. We need, pick needs feedback by June 24. There are, so this is regards the Best Starts for Kids levy, and there are three primary issues. The first involving public health... for Kids levy, and there are three primary issues. The first involving public health funding, the second involving homelessness prevention, and the third involving governance and oversight. So, I will quote the relevant issues that pick is looking for feedback on, and I'll just go through them, and then, if any of them resonate with anyone after I'm done reading through, and anyone wants to provide feedback or discuss, we can do so. So, there's a section on public health funding, says, "SCA members may wish to urge the county council to include assurances in the ordinance that if the levy were to pass, this funding would be allocated to the public health clinics. In the alternative or in addition, SCA members may wish to request language, ensuring that these services will not be cut below 2014 levels if the levy passes. Further, SCA cities may also wish to clarify that cities will not be asked to contribute financially to the clinics again in order to keep these services intact." In the section regarding homelessness prevention, the questions are, "SCA members may wish to question why this program is proposed to be funded for only four years while the levy itself would run for six years. As explained by executive staff, the hope is that the early use of these funds for prevention would obviate the need for more costly services later. While this is a laudable goal, council may wish to clarify programs to prevent homelessness for youth and families," may wish to clarify, yes, "programs to prevent homelessness for youth and families could qualify for funding through the competitive grant process of the levy, not just in the initial first-year levy collection set aside of 16 million. Working to make homelessness rare brief in one time is a shared goal of SCA and the council." And then, in the section on governance and oversight, there are several questions. SCA may wish to recommend that the council include a seat on the governance board for SCA. SCA may wish to encourage the council to make explicit that this community engagement should include engagement with cities in order to, in order to ensure that funding allocations through the levy are aligned with city priorities. SCA may also wish to encourage the county to work with cities to map out existing programs for youth and families that are currently being funded in cities throughout the county. Finally, SCA may wish to ask the council to require that the Best Start for Kids governing boards and King County Department of Community and Human Services provide annual reports backed not just to the county, but also to the Regional Policy Committee, RPC, on which SCA has representation. So, with that, and I just, I just read you the questions from a fairly lengthy document that talks about the backstory. So, I don't know if people have, if, in reading the backstory on this, if people had specific questions or comment, or if any of the questions that I just read, if you hadn't had a chance to go through the reference material, raised any particular questions for you. I will say that some of the feedback in regards to this, some of the concerns that came out of some of the specific cities are a need to strengthen governance, what are the powers, what are the membership, accountability, this question of the annual report, the Veterans Levy, for instance, has an annual report, and then, potential review by geographic area, which I, which I touched on as well. And it would be, I believe it would be point one four, it'd be 14 cents per $1,000 of assessed value for six years. So, I realize that's a lot to dive into, but I'm wondering if any of you have feedback for me on this levy?
So, I don't have specific, I have two questions. One is, any, any chance, did anyone from staff get a chance to review and give you any comment? That would be my first question. The other two is, of those, I'm very curious, since you, you know, with Rhapsody at your side, spent a lot of time delving into these, if, what is your take on those, and if you personally have specific, strong concerns about any one of them?
I am eager to see, the governance side of it, I think, is, is the, the open question. I think we left pick with a general, there was a general sense out of pick that we needed more information on the, on the role, on what the governance model was going to be for these funds. The, the other questions, I think, are, are addressable, but how, how it gets decided how to spend these monies and who controls that, I think, will be important. And I haven't yet seen an answer that I particularly like.
And so, this is, this would be the pick, really, prior to council taking legislative action. This is almost like their agenda, prior to legislative action. They're asking for greater, better defined governance model in the initial legislation. Is that the request?
That's correct. I think that they're looking right now for assurances from the county council, or more clarity from the county council on what that governance model would look like. And so, they've gotten some of that feedback already, and any additional feedback that cities want to give will go into pick, SCA's response to the county ahead of the 24th.
Okay, and so, and so, and so, are you saying, in general, then, how are you on these?
I think, I, I think it's a very good idea as, as a levy, but I think that they need a, a clear, clear oversight on how that money's going to get spent. I think there's a lot of questions on, you know, one of the pieces is how much of it really should go towards public health funding, right? There are folks who would like the majority of it to go towards public health funding, and there are a lot of people that would like to see the other aspects of it emphasized as well. So, there isn't, there is an agreement on what fraction. That's, in terms of pieces of the pie and how it gets allocated, I think that public health funding side of it is, is probably the most contentious. It's not going to get solved before June 24th, but they need to put a governance model in place so that they can, moving forward, divvy those monies effectively.
Okay, well, my, so my comments along, I mean, public health, if, if that includes prevention, because a big part of this is also identifying existing programs. That's one, a part of the expense upfront, but also, but prevention. I mean, and if, and if, and if, if, prevention is in the public health category, I'm not sure how that's breaking down in the conversation that you're referring to, but I, I think that's a key part, and I just would want to make sure. Is that, is that clear?
It is. So, I think what they described as 42.8 million over the life of the levy is proposed to be allocated to support public health programs, including maternity support, family planning services, special supplemental nutritional program for women, infants, and children, which is WIC, and the nurse-family partnership in, at 2014 service levels. However, the ordinance itself does not actually require that the funding be allocated to public health. So... And to answer your other question, I have not talked to the administration yet about feedback since the pick meeting last week.
Okay.
And so, that's what I wanted, wanted to sort of comment on, that it would be nice, we, we've done a very, very limited amount of work on a number of those things, and the administration doesn't have a recommendation yet, and we have a committee of the whole council briefing on the early learning aspect scheduled for June the 23rd.
A solid 12 hours before they need this feedback.
So, if we can get.
That's good.
The questions.
Yeah, that's better than not 12 hours.
And we could take a quick look and then get back to you on that, if that's okay as far as.
Of course.
Our thoughts on that.
So, yeah, that Cal meeting on the 23rd, Adrian Quinn is going to be doing the, and I, she's probably more responsible for the shaping of this legislation and plan than anybody. So.
Right.
So, we'll have her here in our chamber the day before, and so, we'll be able to have a conversation that night. I think I'm much better informed. So, that's a Tuesday, and then you have pick meeting the next day.
No, we do not have a pick meeting. There is a county council meeting? Yeah, there's no pick, no, we've already had our pick meeting for the month. This is a sort of extraordinary item in that it's not coming back to pick. SCA has requested any feedback from municipalities by June 24th. So, what I would do is I would come out of that meeting and send Deanna Dawson a note reflecting the, the conversation that occurred here.
Deanna Dawson is going to be here.
Oh, well, there we go.
For that meeting.
I was not aware that she was going to be here on the 23rd.
She, I had an email from her that said she would be here on the 23rd. Oh, not Deanna Dawson. Diana.
Oh, Diana from the county.
Yeah.
Ah, yes.
Or is Adrian doing it?
Oh, she's doing it, but, but.
I will make sure that one way or the other, that our feedback that night gets back to SCA.
Okay, anything else for good of the order?
I wanted to respond to his.
Oh, go ahead.
So, the, the goals are laudable. Where I'm starting to have difficulty, and I shouldn't say starting, because I've had this difficulty for a long time, is the idea that property owners will bear the burden of these good social programs, and I guess the, the question or the area of exploration that I would want answered is what other options for funding are available, either partial, full, what have you, that reduces or would reduce the burden on property taxpayers? Because you, you, you know, it's so hard to argue against a good policy initiative like this and what it accomplishes, but then, when you look at it from a homeowner's perspective, and I think it was 50-something dollars a year, you say, well, that's not too bad. You know, I can do six bucks a month for this. And you add that to other social service bonds and levies. You add that to transportation, whether it's regional transit, whether it's something the city may do coming out of our strategy, and suddenly, the cost to homeowners goes from $5 a month, you know, when you add in a school bond, which, again, it's very hard to vote against because we want to support good, quality schools. So, you start adding that all up, and, and so, when I'm faced with a bond or a levy like this, the first question I have is, is there another mechanism, or is there simply no other way to fund this type of good proposal? You know, reprioritization, external funding, state funding, you know, this is a King County program only. You know, if this were brought before the state on a much wider scale, is this something that could be funded more broadly than just through the county? Because it, it seems to exclude others in the three-county area, at least, you know, King, Pierce, and Snohomish. So, are there other ways that this can be looked at, other than simply a property tax levy and putting that burden on homeowners? So, from a financial standpoint, that would be the key question that I would want answered.
All right.
Any other feedback for Tola on the topic? Does anyone else have anything for good of the order this evening?
Actually, so, if I, if I, if I can speak to that, my, I just want to say, from my own opinion, we are, we are challenged in this state with having progressive taxation mechanisms, mechanisms that, that don't unduly impact the poor, the poor and working folks of our state. And property tax is one of the more progressive options that we have in front of us. I also think that the state is having a very hard time just doing a basic budget balance combined with meeting McClarys. So, I think that, you know, there are a lot of hard choices right now with, with state funding where it is and county funding where it is. You know, I will certainly pass that feedback along, but I, I, I think that as a state, we have a hard time finding something that's, that's more progressive than, I mean, if the money should be spent, right? It's, it's hard to find a more progressive tax mech, tax mechanism than property tax. But anyhow, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else have anything for good of the order before we move into executive session? With that, then, we will move into executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing the acquisition of real estate under the provisions of RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 per N1 per NB. It's expected to take 15 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow in open session. So, we will now move into executive session at 9:46. So we will now move into executive session at 9:46. So we will now move into executive session at 9:46. Those opposed? That carries unanimously. And that concludes our business for this evening. We are adjourned.
Wow.
There's something else we could do?
Probably, but not tonight.